Board meeting for Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. We call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And just a normal reminder that this meeting is being broadcast live on BNC TV and livestreamed on YouTube. To find BNC TV on YouTube, go to youtube.com and search for Berniston Northfield Community Television. This meeting will be available for later viewing by following the link at the townofburnison.org. You can also watch Channel 1075 on your Comcast dial in Berniston. And we'll start tonight with the warrants. I entertain a motion for the payroll warrant in the amount of $65,576.46. So moved.
Second.
Uh, just to note that the increase is a little higher than normal because of the annual stipends for the select board, the Board of Health, and the school committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion for the vendor warrant in the amount of $71,740.83.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move on to meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of May 14th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the special meeting minutes of May 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll do the calendar announcements. And the first announcement, it's just hot off the press that the Pioneer Valley Regional School Boys Baseball Team has just won the Western Mass Tournament by beating Hopkins Academy four to two. So they'll move on to the state tournament.
Nice.
It's an undefeated season. That's awesome. They've had a great sports year at Pioneer.
Mm-hmm. Got to rev up the fire trucks, right?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it was in Westfield today, right?
No, even.
No fire trucks?
I think it is. I heard of it.
It just came in, 10 minutes ago. So where, where was the game?
In Westfield.
Westfield State, right? Okay, so only half an hour and then they're gonna come through? Get the escort, that whole whoop-dee-whoop-dee?
Better hurry up.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, the Annual Town Report. There are extra 2024 Annual Town Report booklets available at the Town Hall for pickup. And the Annual Town Hall, Town Hall, can't even say it, Town Report is also available online on the Town website at the Select Board's homepage. The Berniston Senior Center of Council on Aging Open House, the Senior Center and Council on Aging Open House will be held on Friday, May 30th, and Saturday, May 31st. Events start at 9:00 AM. Detailed information can be found on the event calendar on the Town website at www.townofburnison.org. If you're interested and able to volunteer to help, please give the Senior Center a call at 413-648-5413. Free regional repair event. The Franklin County Solid Waste District and the Franklin County Technical School are hosting the first annual regional repair event on Saturday, May 31st, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Tech School, 82 Industrial Boulevard, Turnus Falls. Students, instructors, instructors and local fixers will be on hand. Every effort will be made to repair your item or items. Antiques and heirlooms cannot be fixed at this event. For more information, contact the Solid Waste District at 413-772-2438 or email fcswmd@crocker.com.
Where do they fix it?
I think if you have a broken light or a toaster that doesn't work, or some small appliance, they'll do their best to try to make it work again.
Vacuuming, yeah.
It's a sneak.
Your lawnmower.
Yeah.
Dark.
Small engine.
Yeah.
Not your lawn tractor.
And I think the Solid Waste District is involved. They're just trying to throw less things away.
Right.
Yep. It's a great idea.
Next up, Family and Community Events Planning Committee meeting. They will meet on Saturday, May 31st at 10:00 AM at Town Hall. The planning committee will be discussing their first event, Moving in the Park Night, that will take place in mid to late July, 2025. The new Cushman Library hours will be effective June 1st, 2025. The new hours for the Cushman Library begin June 1st. The new hours are Monday from 1:00 to 7:00 PM, Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Cushman Library Chill with Willie. Willie is a Bright Spot Therapy Dog and will be visiting the library with Michelle, his owner, starting June 4th at Cushman Library at 4:00 PM. The program will run every Wednesday during the month of June. A Board of Health meeting. The Board of Health will hold their monthly meeting on Thursday, June 5th at 3:30 at the Town Hall. The United Arc Doug Flutie 5K Walk Run. The United Arc continues to support people living with intellectual and developmental disabilities in achieving the universal goals of inclusion, choice, and independence. They are hosting the second annual United Arc Doug Flutie Walk Run here in Berniston on Saturday, June 7th, at 10:30 AM at Pratt Field. Come join us for a fun and inclusive run, walk, or roll with post-race refreshments at Incandescent Brewery. You can register now at www-fluties5k.com. Is there a link to that on the website too?
Yes.
There is an announcement.
It's on the event calendar.
Perfect, thank you. Notice of a public hearing. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, and the Berniston Zoning Bylaws, the Berniston Zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, June 12th, 2025, at Town Hall Meeting Room for a special permit request to convert unused interior warehouse mezzanine to private contractor offices and bathrooms for electrical contractor business, and to add covered storage area over existing concrete pad for tool storage located at 203 South Street in Berniston. Copies of the application may be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours. The Berniston Cemetery Corporation. The Berniston Cemetery Corporation is holding a bingo fundraiser on Saturday, June 14th, at the United Church of Berniston. All funds will go towards the repair of historic veterans monuments at the Center Cemetery in Berniston. Doors open at 5:00, games start at 6:00. Snacks and drinks are available for purchase, cash or check only. The Cushman Library Summer Reading Program will run from Saturday, June 21st through Saturday, August 2nd for all ages. Activities include crafts-to-go, scavenger hunts, and much, much more. For more information, please contact Cushman Library at 413-648-5402 or email cushmanlibrary@townofburnison.org. The Berniston Planning Board will host an open forum on Thursday, June 26th, 2025, at the Berniston Elementary School Cafeteria from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The open forum is to provide an overview of the open space and recreation plan and gather community input. If you can't make it, your voice still matters. Please take the five-minute survey on the Town website. You can access the survey from the homepage at www.townofburnison.org. For questions, please contact the Planning Board Clerk, Jennifer Moore, at jmoore@townofburnison.org. Any citizens concerned? Seeing none, unless Chris has one. Chris has one?
I just want to make a, a notice that I'm gonna be closed. Town Clerk's Office will be closed next Wednesday and Thursday. I'll be away to a conference.
And if people didn't hear that, the Town Clerk's Office will be closed next week, Wednesday and Thursday. June.
June 4th and 5th.
June 4th and 5th, there'll be a conference.
Right.
First up, Fire Chief Peter Shad. Peter, how are you?
Pretty good, pretty good.
You gonna tell us a little bit about the Emergency Responder Warning System?
Nice table you got here.
Yeah, you like that? You got one similar to, right? I think.
I think mine's heavier.
I heard, I heard it looks great in there. I haven't been down there and checked it out.
How's it look?
Looks good.
Does it? They're rugged tables for sure. So you're looking into the state, as many people have heard, shot us down for a state version of a, some sort of a light system to alert people that a fire truck is responding to a call. And so you looked into some other options?
Yep. Uh, what we're looking at is similar to what they just installed down by the old fire station for the crosswalk. It's just a yellow sign. It has the yellow LED flashing lights on it. And Jimmy said they are quite bright. Uh, they'd be, would be controllable by us at the fire station or from the fire truck. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but our last correspondent said they liked the, the sign, but we gotta give them approval. I get approval for what? Post or pole or whatever we mounted on?
Well, he, he did forward it to the traffic section of, at MassDOT, and he doesn't, he think he, your comment is correct, but he did forward it for, to the traffic section for them to comment on it. So technically, I don't, I don't know if that, if that's for sure okay, but.
So we're trying to go through the process to get Mass DOT to approve this system before Pete spends any money?
Of course, of course.
Which is approved.
And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think we're.
It's in the packets.
Seven thousand something.
For the flashy sign? With the communication back to.
Yeah.
You guys.
The quotes in your booklets, gentlemen?
Flip it right over. I think Pete's trying to.
And this is all the, the communication between MassDOT, myself, and Peter and myself? That's what you have in front of you?
Perfect. It looks like the total price is $7,170.42 for the system that the fire department's looking at.
Uh, the only thing I do not know is how long they stay activated for.
And I stand corrected. Garrett did come back and say, excuse me, he did say it's acceptable to MassDOT and could be installed under permit application, 225-0245. So it was, um, if you look at this email correspondence here from Garrett. Sorry about that. That was like last year when I looked at that.
And this is something you think you can handle in your current budget?
Yes. Or next year's budget.
Or next year's budget. Well, it sounds promising. We get that, have to help with the permit.
Yeah, the permits are, it, it, we can use the existing permit that they declined. He said Garrett, MassDOT, said that we could, if we approve it, we can reuse, reactivate this permit number and go forward with it.
Anybody have any questions for Pete? Jane?
Make a motion. Go ahead. Oh, yeah, I make a mo, sorry. Make a motion. We, uh, we approve the, uh, purchase and installation, I presume, and would be the, uh, for the, uh, for the signs with the flashing lights?
Second.
Yeah.
Any other discussions or questions, everybody?
And from the literature we've gotten, it sounds like it is a fairly simple thing of just a, whatever the, whether the state wants to post concreted into the ground or how far into the ground, but the.
And how far away from the driveway to the.
Right. And then, and then it's just a matter of doing the electrical connections and it would be solar powered. So.
So they go a certain distance away from the entrance? Is that how they typically go? Cause I know if you're coming west, you're kind of in a little rise. You come over the knob and you're there.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're gonna want it before you get to that knob. As you know, driving mixer for a lot of your life, if you come over that hill.
And the sign now is right by, uh, the first house on the other side. So I think when it lights up, you're gonna be easily able to see it.
Perfect.
From probably back there, your permit route, so.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What else you got for us, Pete? It says here, appointment of two new members for the Regional Emergency Medical Committee.
You had brought that up, Peter, remember?
Yes.
So.
My understanding, the task force is completed its duties.
Yep.
Which task force? Could you be specific?
The ambulance, regional ambulance task force. So the town needs to appoint two representatives to that board.
So do we like volunteer them or what do we do here? Like Pete Shad's gonna be on it?
And Ken Boroy?
Yeah.
So I need to prepare appointment orders? Like who, you know what I'm saying? Like how, what, what does it, what do we need to do?
I think you need to formally go through the process, appoint someone to.
Okay. All right. I didn't know who was gonna be, so I didn't.
Andrea at, uh, Northfield Town Hall will give you the wording.
Okay, you got it.
I mean, you're willing to do it, right?
Yeah.
And you're willing to do it.
So it's gonna be Peter and.
Every year, we're gonna have to get reappointed.
Are they one-year appointments or three?
Yeah.
One?
That's what I understood them to.
Okay, so I'll prepare the appointment orders for next meeting.
Sounds good.
Question off, right?
12th, 11th of June, excuse me.
What's the expiration date gonna be? Maybe it's a June 31st? I mean, not June, March 31st.
I'll get it from Andrea. I'll, I'll ask Andrea, right?
It's, it might be July 1st every year, right?
Yeah, you would guess.
Yeah, maybe it'd be on the same. Good question, yeah.
Yeah, just trying to see what the expiration date's gonna be.
I will. I will do that.
Already have five I have to take care of.
The purpose of that is to oversee the, the workings of the Northfield EMS and to prepare a budget and to make sure the program stays on track.
Yeah.
Have all the towns now had their town meeting to vote that budget?
Gil is.
Lydon's meeting's on the 2nd of June.
No, I think Gil's the last one.
Yeah, and they're coming soon. They might be, do you know when Gil is?
I do not.
Oh, okay.
I think they already had it.
They do a two-session one.
Yeah, I think they, they do the money and on one day and.
Yeah, everything else on another day.
I don't see why it won't make it.
They're only a couple of weeks apart.
Okay, can I jump ahead a little bit in our schedule while you're here?
Sure.
The appointment of Jared Smith as a volunteer firefighter?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to appoint Jared Smith as a volunteer firefighter with the Berniston Volunteer Fire Department, effective May 25th, 2025, at the standard rate for training and responding to calls.
So moved.
Second.
And just for clarification on that, Jared was on the fire department a number of years ago. Stepped away because his life caught busy and now he wants to come back?
Yep.
And he filled out all, he came in and he filled out all the employee paperwork. He's, Susan has the packet. Everything's good to go.
Any reason we shouldn't appoint him?
I don't think so.
All those in favor?
Aye. He's a warm body.
There you go.
He's a warm body that has, has some knowledge.
Yeah. What else you got for us, Anna?
Uh, solar power for the fire station.
Solar power.
The back overhang off the back of the building facing back towards the railroad tracks. That's in the sun from.
Yeah.
Seven or eight o'clock in the morning until late in the afternoon. I, I haven't personally heard a lot of commercial businesses or municipal people going after solar power, but I mean, this would be an ideal location. Good chance of saving the town or fire department some money.
I wonder if the grant writers can look into.
That would be for where I'd go.
Police Fire Highway.
I thought Green Committee too. I wasn't sure, right? For.
Yeah, we can look at it.
I think that would be.
Is this the whole Green Committee right here?
It's an energy.
Here's half of it. We have a form right here of the Green Committee.
But there could be other grant funding opportunities too.
Sure, of course I will. I was, I know that when I talked to Pete, I had mentioned the Green Committee, you know, they kind of.
Emergency services.
Yeah.
Well, we have one application in, so waiting to cycle, might, we might not want to. We should look at it as a green committee, but we have to be aware of the cycles.
And Chris Mason might have some input on solar.
Well, yeah, that's, I'm gonna reach out to him. Because I'm not sure that the green communities, what we do is for the solar. It's for energy upgrades to buildings.
Yeah, he may say, yeah, we don't need it.
So if there might be other state.
I will definitely, no, I'm gonna definitely look into that. Just as a courtesy, I'm extending a courtesy to the Green Committee. That's all. I wasn't sure. No one, didn't want all the stuff.
Look at the highway department's got some roof footage that would be good. The police department.
Yeah, I will definitely look grants for solar for municipal buildings.
I know, uh, Williamsburg, they just did their police fire station.
Right.
Couple of years ago. And they have a basically a big carport that's probably twice the size of their building.
Mm-hmm.
That's all solar. And all their spare vehicles sit out there underneath that carport, plus they're making money off it besides, so.
The sheriff's department and Greenfield, they have a big solar array. They have a parking lot.
UMass.
So UMass.
All right.
So.
Right outside of them.
Municipal, so we should be able to find something, I think.
I'm on it.
So, so my, my idea would to continue that framework all the way across the whole back of the whole building. So it'd basically give us a whole big porch area. And it's all right in the sun, so.
So we'd just need a fire station and be, we'd consider, you know, just collectively the town buildings.
While you're looking, you might as well look at any of these.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
If you, some of them may be geared toward public safety, you know, police and fire more so than.
Got it.
Well, and that's gonna depend what direction the, the roof is and all.
That back of his building now is awesome.
It's probably roasting all day.
This is southeast. Right.
All right.
Anything else, Peter?
I do. I do.
You do? We get extra overtime for this.
Uh, Northern Tree, uh, Northern, uh, Tree Service finally took down that large pine tree that was right by the pole at the fire station. So that tree is out of the way now. And I, I think as far as tree removal goes, we're, we're pretty close to taking, I think there's one hemlock tree that Brad's gonna take down. It's.
The tree warden.
Yeah, the tree warden. So it's, pretty much opens that up.
It's looking a lot better, for sure.
For sure.
Visibility is good.
Yep.
And how is it really coming out of there when you're going? Is it pretty decent right now?
Uh, David, kinda cautious, like they said, the, the view to the west, I guess, or.
East.
Towards the center of town is pretty good. It's the traffic coming, coming from the east to coming over that hill. And at a time of day too, I mean, in the morning, you're going out and people are looking into the sun too, so you're. It, there's definitely a learning curve for the general motor and public and the firemen.
Right, right.
They got to use extreme caution.
Well, that's where your flashing light definitely helps for that. Get my heads up.
What, which, which would go along with our, our next item is, uh, we wanna build a sign or put a sign out there next to Route 10. And we're debating whether it's gonna be a one-sided or two-sided sign, but that's gonna come down to what are the state's requirements? How close can we be? How big a sign can we have? You know, uh, and what we do, we mount some type of a pole and same thing, use a small solar sensor, and put another red light that we could activate right there at the entrance lane where the sign is, so.
So you're looking to build something yourselves or?
Uh, we probably haven't hired somebody done.
We've done a lot with Hale. They have some good ideas.
That probably requires a permit with MassDOT though. It's gonna be, we'd have to, I think we should.
Even if it's on our land?
No, well, I would think you, I thought you wanted it on the other.
Talking to Glenn, I mean, he's just one of the foremans. He said that they'd probably keep it all under the same permit.
Okay.
All, all the work right there. But again, we just have to verify that.
Yeah, we would, that would be a MassDOT permit to do the sign.
Cause it's the same area.
But we would have to build our own sign, I guess, right?
If he gets one design.
Put the sign. So we need to get the permit first and then.
And if he gets one design, maybe then we'll know footprint.
Yeah.
Does it fall under town zoning bylaws for signs?
No.
The disciples have that.
And I, I did talk to Danny Devine. He was gonna talk to the building inspector to get his feel on it.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Everything else, I, I just, I know we're exempt, excuse me, but I mean, I don't wanna put up a flashy 20-foot by 30-foot sign. Oh, come on!
We don't let other people.
I, I wanna work within the same scope to anybody else.
Right, that's a good idea.
Everything else, but, I mean, I can't see paying several thousand dollars on a two-sided sign that's gonna set back 58 feet off the highway.
Right, right, right.
You know?
People to.
And then we'd have to build a stamp to keep it out of the wetland, so. And again, it's one of these things, we'd like to do it once. Do it right.
So we'll, I'll take the first, the lead then with putting the, you know, applying for the permit. And then that'll
Yep.
dictate the rest of how things go.
And if they get to the point where they ask for the footprint and design, well then.
Then he'll have, yeah, and they will.
And that's what I said, there's no sense in going to having plans and designing something until we know.
Right. But it could be part of the application for the permit, but, yeah.
And it could be part of the, um, permit you already have.
Correct, correct. That, that's what the foreman thought it would be, so.
That'd be a home run.
And the foreman's for MassDOT, is that who this guy?
Yes.
Okay, cause it depends who you talk to, right?
Yeah, he's the local guy.
Okay. All right. I'll talk to Garrett, right? Garrett, I can ask Garrett if he can throw a sign into this permit, right? That's what I'll do.
Yeah.
All right. I, I'll, I'll.
We got a strategy.
I'll keep you updated on where, how this goes.
Okay. Great. That's all I got.
That's all? I got one more thing. Because I was, uh, in a butter to the old fire station, periodically you guys on a Wednesday night would literally whoop it up with the fire alarm. Did, did you move the, the whoop-it-upper over to the new one or?
It's currently inoperable.
Oh, darn.
And it has been for a while, but.
That's not true, cause I heard it. Somebody's playing games.
Unless it's somebody just playing on the truck, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Probably Brad.
He could have been. He gets all excited when he gets behind the wheel. So you're not gonna move it? Or what's broken on it?
No. Uh, it was an old system that went back to, the system was tied into Shooter Store, back in Shooter Store. How was the fire truck?
That old?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was a three-way thing.
All three, all three ways were in my house.
The main power thing was up here at the Town Hall, so then the wires ran to the fire station and ran. The main power thing was up here at the town hall, so then the wires ran to the fire station and ran back to Streeter Store.
But once the bell on the town hall starts working again, Pete's gonna have to get one.
You gotta, I was gonna tell you. And if it really is broken, Franklin County Tech on the thirty-first is, has a fix-it weekend.
That's a great point.
You can get it fixed.
Someone was listening to the announcement.
It'll probably blow their mind if you drop that up over there, right?
Sure. They'd love it, you kidding me, being able to test it?
The boys would love it.
They would, and they'd figure it out in three minutes, too.
You gotta understand, Jake, you could, you'll be able to hear it at your house if it's at the new fire station. Wait the living day.
You can do it right off your car, chief, no problem.
Whoa!
Alright.
Well, if it, if it gets repaired, I'm gonna give the controls at my house.
Okay, instead of Streeters, we move it to the, to Jane's.
There you go.
Well, I, I guess I do have one other item.
Yours, yes, Tom?
There we go.
Yeah.
What's gonna be our official plan with the old fire station now?
That's one of our agenda items, and if you'd like, we can-
Why don't we just skip to that?
Jump to that, yeah, let's jump to that. Would you like to do that while you're sitting there?
I've been told by a former selectman that the building, the old fire station is jam-packed full of stuff. Is that the case?
It's filling up.
Filling up quickly.
Okay.
Filling up.
So, get your dibs in early.
Okay, here, this is the, is it, it's new business, I think, new business. We'll jump ahead to it. The old fire station, bulky item storage. The department heads are aware that the old fire station will be used for storage, at present, the highway, police, and fire departments are using the space for bulky items. There's plenty of space, gotta be careful how we use that word, for other department's storage if needed.
Yeah.
Update on the utilities in the old fire station, for the heat, 'cause you're, really, anything that has to remain heated is gone, right, from, for you guys.
Yeah.
So, there is oil in the tank.
Yep.
Karen's called Sandry, um, to transfer the account from automatic fill to a will call. We'll see if Jane still gets the phone calls, but.
That's right, that was so weird.
You heard that story, right?
Couple of times.
So, it's not gonna be auto-filled anymore, just so you're aware of that. It's gonna, and consider keeping the fuel in the tank, in case the heat has to be turned on, and the thought process there is, we know it's not a very fancy heating system, but if you needed to tear something apart in there because you didn't have space in there, or Brian Minor did, or Jimmy Palmieri needed to keep something in the heat for a minute, we do have the ability to put some heat into that building for a short window of time. That was some of the conversation Karen had along conversation with Brian Minor about it. In regards to the water that feeds the building, we were discussing early on of shutting the water off at the street. Because we're not gonna heat it full-time, we don't wanna-
Yeah, that would be embarrassing.
Be causing freeze-up issues. Brian Minor is pretty sure he can push the water back far enough, 'cause it comes up through the floor, so that, that short section won't freeze. And there are, you can use non-toxic antifreeze and things like that, so- Some of the thought process for us is, do we wanna have Karen arrange to shut the water off, and you're okay if we were to do it now, right? He's, Brian would take care of the bathroom facilities to make him so we wouldn't get the stink and- From not having a water barrier-
Right.
In the toilet.
It's important, like, to think about it in the sense of how we winterize Powers Institute, the museum. It would be, Brian Minor told me, it would be on the same, he would think about it like that, like, he'd winterize, and then again, you know, kick up the water in the summertime, turn it back on.
And we could, 'cause then there'd be a, a toilet facility in there-
Yeah.
In the summer months, so just don't think it's worth us paying to heat it, 'cause-
Yeah.
Right, who's gonna pay for it, for one?
Well, if you shut the water off, you'll stop getting a meter charge. If you tell the water district you don't want water to that building anymore, you won't have water and you won't have any kind of a bill.
Right, that'll go away too.
'Cause they do a minimum.
Right, it's a standard, you're a connection charge or whatever it's called.
So, I guess one of the questions for us is, are we all good with shutting the water off? Have the water department shut the water off to that building?
I have a question.
You're good with it?
But what if somebody needs to use the bathroom while they're there doing stuff?
That's, and in the winter months, it's gonna be, you're not gonna be able to use it.
Alright.
Well, if you shut the water off completely, they're not gonna be able to use it anyway.
Chris's point, what if somebody does?
And then the toilet should be removed.
Right, but I think that was part of Brian's.
And the septic would have to be closed, I don't know about the septic, the rules for closing out the septic.
Well, it wouldn't go that far, yeah.
Oh, okay.
In case we decide to do something different with that five years from now.
True.
There's a tank there.
Can still use it.
It's a tight tank, right?
You don't have any issues with that being done, though, right?
No, no, I mean, in the electric bill, what was the last one, forty-four dollars?
Yeah.
That's the last bill.
And the one before that was fifty-six, so I mean, it's-
What, what's the water bill?
I don't know.
Can't be very high.
It's not a lot, but we don't wanna heat the building.
I know.
My water, our water bill here at town hall, it's like seventy dollars for the year.
Yeah, but he fills up a bumper truck.
From there? Okay, oh, yeah.
But, but, yeah, I was thinking the same thing, it's like, still, it's a basic sixty-five dollars or something.
You never hit the-
Twice a year or whatever it is.
But what else were you thinking, well, let's take a, make a motion first to shut the water off, everybody's good with that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
But you had some other thoughts about that building? Is that what you were bringing up?
No, I mean, others, well, one, am I gonna be responsible for the building?
Keep it under our budget?
The electric bill or whatever, that type of thing, which is not gonna be much, I mean, I got no problem with that.
I, I would think maybe it comes under the town hall, the select board?
Um, you got three departments that are storing stuff in there now, I don't know if they decide how much space anybody gets. You got, have these three other departments that wanna go in there.
I know library wants in, I know rec wants in, yeah, Jen Stennis said.
You know, it's, it's not a dumping ground.
Right.
No, I, I guess you-
And then I'm concerned about that, everybody, everybody wants a place to put something, and so-
Twenty years from now, it's-
Twenty, yeah, I lived in the house for eighteen years.
Right now, it's pretty good, but-
Yeah.
I mean, not picking on rec, but they have so much stock.
We'll put that there till we decide what to do with it, and we never decide what to do with it, and it becomes a-
Send it to the transfer station, we'll store it there.
Change the code, first of all, and give the code to one-
And then who, who decides how many square feet everybody gets out of that building?
Well, you could get rid of the code and go to keys like you did everywhere else, then you could control the keys as to who's gonna get a key. And you'd know who has a key.
Or we just change the code, everybody knows what the code is.
As soon as you give it to one person, they're gonna tell their sister, their mother, their brother.
I think you should go-
Key?
Yeah.
It's gonna be harder.
Okay.
Um, I know that's an expense.
It's gonna be minimal, though, I think, I don't think, if we're not heating it, the power breaks.
I mean, you're like rekeying one door.
Oh, rekeying it, you're talking about?
Re-lock it, yeah, one door, so.
It's one door? What, are there keys to the garage doors?
There's just a lock, a push button.
And how, and, and I guess the question, how much stuff is the library looking to store, how much stuff is the rec looking for?
I did not hear from the library or rec that they needed space there.
Rec said they wanted to store soccer nets over winter.
But there's on the agenda too for the con, container, so we might-
Right, I think the library wants to put their books in there before they do their book sales.
Right, the books that they use to store upstairs, is what they want to go in there.
I mean, we'll just have to communicate to them that it's not gonna be heated.
Right.
If nobody goes in there for six weeks in the summer, they're probably gonna be moldy.
Alright, so I think I did, I don't think the communication's been done well on this, I'll do, but I gotta reach back out to department heads, 'cause I wasn't told.
Maybe one of your meetings.
Yeah, my next meeting with them is in June, can it wait till then?
Sure, yeah, for sure.
Yours. And to Brian's point, when you store books in there, uh, yeah, you, you have to worry about the mold, what kind of shelving is it gonna be on? Is it gonna be on shelving, is it gonna be on tons, if it's on shelving, it should be airflow shelves, you know, uh, there's a name for it.
You may have to keep the fan running.
Let's put it that way.
Keep the air- 'Cause really, how often do you guys go in there, probably not very often, right? I don't think highway goes in there much, except maybe they grab the chipper.
Yep, chipper, the lawnmower, I mean, they, they boost and tires and stuff in there, so.
Did we?
And Jimmy's talking about putting his radar-
Trailer.
Trailers, signs there, whatever in there, so.
So, it does take more, maybe one of your meetings-
Yeah.
To coordinate a little better than-
Yeah, let me do a better job with that.
Right now, it's just-
I didn't get responses from the library or-
There's a fair amount of space in there, but there's not that much space in there.
Right.
No, but then-
It'll fill quick, and then it, then it won't be a walk-through, it'll be a fire hazard.
Well, especially when you're talking about the trailers with the radar signs, when you're talking about the bigger items, it's gonna fill fast.
Yeah, we never decided on the expenses, what, who's-
Yeah.
Effective when?
July first, maybe.
Alright. 'Cause he's already budgeted for throughout the year.
I mean, I know we didn't think of that during budget season, but we're talking minimal money.
You didn't budget for that.
Well, I, I, I didn't know the electrical, I mean, it can be pretty low, but-
Those are the only two expenses, electric and water?
Yeah, on hot waters.
Comcast is out of there.
I mean, you're probably talking fifty bucks a month, right?
The oil tank.
The, the oil, the, the much-
Oil potentially, I, I don't see us honestly running the heating there very much.
Right, and then, then again, though, I mean, the doors, not like the doors are-
And if it's, let's say it's highway that needs to run the furnace, well, then you fill it. If it's the fire that needs to run the furnace, well, then you fill it. If it's rec that needs to run the furnace, then they fill it.
I'm thinking more about when we have, um, below zero temperatures for a week in a row. And what if they get stored in there that shouldn't be freezing up?
It shouldn't be anything in there that can't freeze.
The chipper?
That can freeze.
Has fuel in it, right?
That can freeze, though. No different than your car.
I just, I think, I think it pays to start out by thinking of all the problems you can have.
Yep.
Rather than waiting for a problem to occur.
Well, let's see who wants in there first, and have to go from there.
And then, you know, how are you gonna divide up the space?
Right.
And I always wanted the front corner of that building to be, um, modified so that the old fire engine could be on display, always there. And that means modifying one of the doors so you can see it if it's in there, and building a wall so it's safe from, um, all visitors.
What's the budget for that for next budget season, then, huh?
Yeah, if, if your department can do that in their spare time.
I'll tell Scott.
They just got done with a, over the last year and a half of their spare time.
I'll come and hand you the news. I might run the jump, but, um, I, I'd like you to, um, put that back on the table and think about it, 'cause that, that-
And-
Too bad to have that thing buried.
Other citizens coming forward with their ideas to how to use it too, please contact the town administrator.
Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just have a question, the furnace, it doesn't require water in, does it?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's a hot air one over there, right?
Hot air, okay.
So, you'll continue to pay the bills?
This is a good question.
Peter. Alright, that's, he's left, he's gonna continue to pay the bills, I'm gonna meet with the department heads, and we'll table this and talk about it. Alright.
Sounds good.
But, but the bill should come back on the table, that's just for this year, the fire department, since they budgeted us.
Do you have another finance committee meeting in the next couple of months?
I hope, I'm planning to have one Monday, because we got a couple of reserve fund transfers to make, but I haven't heard back from the rest of the committee if they can make it on Monday.
Just to see what they think, where that should come from, maybe too.
Okay, yeah, I, I think it's town expense.
Yeah, I think so too, come back to us.
No problem.
Anybody have any other questions about that part of it?
Nope.
Nope.
Are you sure you're done now?
I think so. Unless you start complaining again tonight.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Alright, thank you guys.
Be in touch.
And when is the parade for the baseball team?
I didn't hear nothing.
Yeah, I was telling them. Maybe they're waiting for the States, not just Western Mass.
Come on, Western Mass.
Western Mass, last D champions.
Undefeated season?
Yeah. Who usually arranges that?
They're headed down there in a few minutes.
Is that what it says? Okay.
Means they ain't getting no work done over there.
That's good. Light some sirens instead.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Prepare for hearing sirens shortly.
It's okay to hop in to see the table and stuff?
Sure, anytime, anytime.
Haven't seen it in a while, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Alright.
Very good.
Okay, moving back to-
Oh, when are we gonna have the party?
They're not ready.
Soon. In my lifetime?
Fourth of July.
You're feeling well, right?
I'm hanging in there.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Back to new business.
Page three, yep.
Letter of appreciation for GS Precision, Inc. GS Precision, I can't, hard to say that word for me, Precision, out of Brattleboro, Vermont, donated two conference tables to the town of Berniston. And we prepared a letter of appreciation, and it reads-
And you see one right here?
One of them, right here in front of us. Dear GS Precision Inc., we are writing to express our sincere gratitude to GS Precision for the generous donation of the two conference tables to the town of Berniston. Tables are a valuable asset and its impact on our workplace is already being felt. We would also like to thank Jody Coleman and the maintenance staff members, Dave Howe, Shane Coy, and Michelle Wilkins for transporting and assembling the tables. Their hard work made it happen. Specifically, the conference tables provide a dedicated space at town hall and the fire station for team members to come together, share ideas, and discuss projects. They facilitate productive meetings, provide ample space for spreading out materials, and can be designed to influence the dynamics of a meeting. Your company's commitment to supporting the town is greatly appreciated. We are confident that this donation will serve as a valuable asset for years to come. Thank you once again for your generosity. In essence, the conference tables are more than just a piece of furniture. They are a vital tool for fostering collaboration, communication, and productivity within the town hall and the fire station. Best regards, the Berniston Select Board.
I move we accept that letter of appreciation to GS Precision. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thought, building demolition behind town hall. The town administrator sent an email to Jim Hawkins, the Franklin County Cooperative Inspection Program, building inspector, to inquire about a permit for the demolition of the garage behind town hall. Even though the town is hoping to do the work themselves via the highway department, Jim Hawkins confirmed that the demolition permit application requires a licensed construction supervisor to oversee the project. The demolition will cost approximately five to seven thousand dollars and will need to determine where the money will come from. We'll also need to determine if for sure we don't need town meeting approval.
Yes, I'm working on that. Jane gave me some ideas.
Some, there's some thought that to tear down a town building, we need town meeting approval to do it?
To take down a municipal building. So I'm, I'm digging into that.
Cause it's a town owned building.
Yeah. And in my conversations with Brian Minor, I know the power is cut. They did remove the wire from it.
Yep.
Um, the thoughts were that they would put it into dumpsters, have it hauled out of here, remove the, it's not really a pad out there. There's a pad, but it's kind of broken up. Remove what's there. And whenever it happens, there's local towns that in the summer months often mill old blacktop. And he can get it free. He just has to be there when they're doing it and truck it. So there's the expense to pay the highway folks and the trucking costs. But he would do that parking lot with a re-ground blacktop to make it more permanent like the one next to the old fire station and the entrance road into Pratt Field. So it would be a decent parking area.
You got a septic system back there. You don't want to pave over that.
No, we're not going to pave. No, he's talking just where the foundation was.
Oh, just where the building is now?
Just where the building is now. That's eventually if we get there. So first we have to decide if we can do it without town.
Right. And I owe you that answer.
If we can, can renovate, construct, money be used for something like that? It's a renovation to make the parking lot to get us off.
Renovate and destruct.
Or is that too much of a gray area?
It's a little on the gray side.
Think about it. We don't even know right now, but then we don't know for sure if we can tear it down till after another town meeting.
I know that when, when we were having to take care of the Hollywood, we had to have a town meeting vote to approve the funds for that. Now, was that because we didn't think we could afford it and renovate, construct? Or because we just were told or decided that it was not renovate and construct if it was destructed? But that also had a problem with asbestos, which I don't think we have here. But, um, I, that was fiscal year 20 is when we appropriated those funds.
And I think for the licensed, the construction supervisor oversee the project, I don't think that's going to be a hard ask for a couple of local people here.
We must have had to, well, we had to hire them.
To do that and give them a couple of bucks to do it.
Yep. And I also did get the name of Abide Inc. They did the barn behind. I got their information if we have to take it a step further.
Okay.
You'll have to get bids or maybe not.
If it's plus than ten thousand.
Five to seven thousand.
And the highway guys are doing it. It's really not a bid, so.
Just need a construction supervisor.
That's the car for the dumpsters.
Okay. There's, is there any, what's salvageable out there?
Nothing.
The tiles on the roof.
Yeah, if somebody wanted to take the time to take them off. We're certainly not going to invest the time.
Huge wide planks out there.
For that, I don't know.
It's, it's actually on the parcel record as a garage. That's what it's listed as, a garage. It's not a building, town, like, I guess. It's listed as a garage, so I think that could be helpful.
So there's more to come on that one, I think. We really can't do much tonight, but we can think of some things.
Okay.
See where we, what we think we can do for money or not do without a town meeting.
Right.
Is that fair to everybody?
Yeah.
You good with that, Jane?
Yeah, it can't come down until the fire engine comes out of there.
It's out of there.
It's out of there.
There's nothing in there. Yep. I don't know where it is though, to be honest, Jane, but it's out of there. I don't know where they did put it, but.
Next up, the Recreation Commission Conex container at Pratt Field. The Rec Commission Conex container at Pratt Field is in need of replacement. Existing container is in poor condition. It is leaking, causing moisture that may damage the equipment and is damaging the equipment. Fixing the container is not a feasible option. The highway folks and the maintenance team went over there and looked at it. They could do their best to seal it. There's not much left of the floor of it because it's always sat on the ground. So the floors and those are wooden. They're not steel. There's not much of that left. How old is it? That one's been there for, oof.
I was on the Rec Commission.
Long.
I'm going to say over twenty years.
Okay, so it doesn't always have anything. No, absolutely not.
And it didn't, we got it for free, so.
But Brian and Danielle did go over and look at it and they, he says, I can probably seal it up to stop it. It'd buy us a year and a half or two years, but there's really not much left of the floor.
No.
So I asked them to do a little looking around. And you can buy a one-time use twenty foot Conex, which is what that is. Means stuff was shipped to this country in one and then they sell them. He can buy a one-time use for four thousand, or he can buy a brand new one, never used for five thousand. He would put it up on blocks so air gets underneath it. And where he works another part-time job, they've put ventilation into Conex boxes and had very good luck keeping the air moving in them so mold doesn't become an issue. So I know Jen was the one that brought that to us. I think it was during one of your meetings.
It was at the joint rec meeting too.
Oh, that's right, too. The joint meeting with Recreation and Select Board. That they brought up the fact that there's getting water intrusion and the equipment's starting to become moldy because the air doesn't change enough in there.
Right.
It's a four thousand dollar expense. Is it something we can wait a year and put it in the budget for next year?
They should have the money.
Okay.
They, um, I didn't bring the.
I have it if you'd like it.
Or you want to look and get back to Karen? We can make the motion.
No, I, I, I'm sure there's money enough. The, um, money that goes from the Kiwanis Fund into the Kiwanis Recreation and Equipment Fund. And I would think that this is a logical use for that money. And I've forgotten how much is in there, but I think it's more than five thousand.
I don't think I have it. I can look real quick.
Who would coordinate that?
Brian Minor.
Okay.
He'd talk to Jen to make sure she still wants it in the same place.
Make a motion to spend up to forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Forty-five hundred dollars to acquire.
I thought it said five thousand for a new one.
Do you want a new one?
For a one-time use one and there's nothing wrong with them.
There isn't? Oh, okay.
They're very, very good condition.
It's just shipped over.
A one-time use means they use it at one time.
Right.
Right.
Not it's a one-time use.
That's correct.
Yes, 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 yes. Sorry about that.
I don't think I have.
So forty-five hundred dollars for to acquire a one-time use and how do we get rid of the old guy?
Brian says he can break it up enough to put it in the steel and get, and get a couple of bucks for it.
So that's my motion.
Uh, second.
Any other discussion on that?
I was trying to look for.
Unless we want to say specifically where the pay is coming from?
Yeah, you should.
We'll give them a half a second.
Yeah, I don't see it in, I don't have.
That's the expense.
No, I need the one with the, um, I need the other report. It has all the trusts and the.
Oh, the special funds.
Oh, the luxury.
Special funds.
I might have it here. I don't know. Let's see.
I don't think she puts that.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Well, while Karen's looking for that, I can tell you, um, yeah, the Kiwanis Club, uh, as we discussed, uh, last night or briefly with a couple of the members, but for quite some time, we have been discussing buying one of these. And, and, uh, we have a cement pad that's already there up there. You know, put it up on blocks.
Yes, thank you.
Cause we're, we're running out of room.
They're really handy.
So, oh, yeah.
Well, maybe Brian can work a deal if he's getting two.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Uh, and the nice thing is, uh, because of where that cement pad is up at the, up at the park, uh, we want to try to make it so that we can just back the truck right up to it, offload and in, and it goes. And we're mostly talking about the scarecrow and the stuff.
Yep.
Scarecrow in the park stuff, cause it's all heavy fry laters and grills and things like that. But anyway, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You can finish.
No, that's pretty much all.
Did you find a spot?
Yeah, there's fifty-six, five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars in there now.
Which one?
And there'll be a thousand dollars going in July one.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know when they used anything out of it last.
And what is the name of that fund officially?
Yeah.
Recre- Kiwanis Recreation Equipment Fund.
So my, like, adjust my motion to reflect that is the source of the funds of the forty-five hundred dollars.
And the only thing I would comment on that is, um, recreation should be notified, contacted first to say this is where we want to pay for it. This is where we think it should be paid for.
And they'll need to vote on it, right?
No, they don't need to vote on it.
Oh, they don't need to vote on it.
Um, yeah, maybe they do.
They have a meeting on June second.
Yeah, that's good. Good timing.
They, they probably would have to, um, submit the warrant article.
Can you get that on their agenda?
Or not warrant article.
Yeah, on the recreation.
That's right, too.
Acting.
Acting, interim.
Okay, whatever. One of those.
Yes, I'll second the, uh, motion, yes. Any other discussion on that? We'll get rec's approval first.
Yeah, cause, cause they, they'll have to submit the, the bill when it comes through, you know.
Bill scheduled from Jen, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Karen, I'm going to slide these in your direction so I don't steal them.
Next, uh, re-establishment of the town newsletter. The town is considering re-establishing the Berniston Community Newsletter in FY twenty-six. Overwhelming feedback from town residents over the last few years has been significant. The town website serves as a comprehensive communication platform and municipal content management system, making it easier for residents to access important information and services. However, the town newsletter offers numerous benefits, primarily boosting community engagement and fostering a stronger sense of connection.
So it's just like a discussion?
Yeah.
Cause I'm not sure.
What are folks' thoughts of doing it? We did put that budget line item in for FY twenty-six at the eight hundred dollars. We decided it was enough money in there.
We, we did not.
Because that carry is over, right, that one? Do we want to try? And what was the thought process behind who was going to lead it?
Well, I dug up all the old files, so the templates are there. Um, I think Jane can speak to this too, but the, the, I, I would be willing to keep, to get it started again. And then the goal would be to, it, with the tax work-off program, it would be, maybe hire someone to work out, you know, to, to take it over. But, um, maybe in twenty twenty, yeah, anytime in twenty twenty-six, I'd, I'd be willing to kick it off and just get it going.
I mean, I think people did like it.
Could I go?
Absolutely.
I think they did. We stopped, may I?
Yeah.
Um, we stopped publishing that, um, in the middle of the year. I don't think we completed a year with it.
Yeah, you have to.
And, and we took subscriptions from individuals and companies who wanted to advertise in there.
Yep.
So before we start asking people to, um, buy ads, we got to find out how much we still owe anybody who paid for a full year. Because they could pay for one, uh, issue or they could pay for the year. If, I don't know how many people did the one issue. I don't even know how many people did one year. I can look back at my publications and see how many ads are in there. Um, but I, I'm concerned about, um, having adverse reactions. If we start the newspaper and we start saying, um,
No, that's right.
You can advertise this. We'll help cover the expense of doing the newspaper. And then Brian says, yeah, well, I paid for a subscription before and I get my whole year. You know, and, and that'll happen some, somehow, and it's legitimate. So I think we should figure that out and, and how, how to contact those people and say, oh, you know, we'll run your ad for the rest of the subscription that you, you know, if we can find that information.
And I have the list of, I, I found an Excel spreadsheet of everybody that, you know, again, I think that's a great idea though to pull the last.
Yeah.
The last, the last published newsletter to see whose ads are in there. That'll be a great clue to start and then just, and this would be a phone call. Maybe going to visit the business and I could do that, you know.
And make sure that's still the ad they would want.
Yeah, oh, right, but to clarify, like what Jane said, did they get their money's worth?
Definitely the right thing to do.
And then what do we want the subscription fee to be? It's definitely, it was a hundred dollars last, it was a hundred dollars.
It was a hundred dollars because there were four issues. So it was like twenty-five dollars in it.
An issue. So we want to raise that a little bit? I don't know. We would probably might consider that, cause all the prices to publish and print things rather are higher.
We should, we should, uh, go back to trying to have it printed at the jail. That's where it was printed. Um, maybe not the last couple of issues, but most of the history of the newsletter was that it was published at the jail.
Right.
Yeah, and then it was taken to direct, Adam's direct for mailing.
Yeah. And, but Adams could do both too. He could do the.
Printing and.
He would do the printing and we could see if how that looks. If it's cheaper at the jail, of course, but I'm just saying we could see.
Cheaper at the jail.
If we can get in.
Yeah, if we can get in. Oh, you have to.
I should get my card.
I think at the jail, you just have to pay for materials to.
Right.
Right.
Well, we should start looking at it, I think.
Yeah, I would, I'll do, so I can, I'll, with Jane, I'll probably lean on Jane a little bit, of course, if you don't mind, Jane. And I'll, I'll start doing the homework to find out where we're at, you know, the businesses and what, what, you know. And then, um, maybe get price, maybe see if the jail could pick it up again, you know, just kind of come back, you know, like a month. You know, maybe give me some time to pull all of it together and update, update you on the status of that.
And then we'll do a motion then, if it all looks like it'll work out.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, one word of caution. Having a tax write-off individual, um, doing the newsletter, maximum number of hours they would have for the year would be fifty this coming year.
Yeah.
So.
Might not be a good idea.
I get some calculation as to how long it takes, needs to be done.
Maybe they could assist you with it, if that was a help, or sometimes that's my help.
And I guess, or, and I guess we're going to replicate exactly how, we're just going to kick up how we did it before, right? Input from all departments and all that, right? That's what we're going to do.
Well, yeah, in the past, well, if you read the issues, but all departments and local, um, organizations were offered the opportunity to put.
Yeah, like Kiwanis.
United Church, Kiwanis.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is, um, everybody should be limited to one page or less.
Okay.
Cause sometimes, uh, in the past, some people would go on for several pages.
Yeah, and the printing gets expensive.
Yeah, we could make parameters. If we're going to kick it back up, we'd reintroduce everything of what the, this is, you know. So we take, it's going to take a little bit of planning before we even start it. Cause we, we would have to revisit all, all these things to see, and even about price. If it helps, like right now, it's like six, seven pages, right? I believe that, uh, eight pages. So I don't know if we want to consider, you know, keeping the same, keeping the same contributors, but.
If you keep it to a page, you'll, you'll knock some off just by doing that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think a good lead article about something real good, like Jody sent today. Jody sent pictures of proof of when the clock tower, like he's got the history.
Yeah.
Like having an article like that about the history in the clock tower and this is what we're doing to it. Like that should be like the front page.
Yep.
And then, you know, so we should, we could, you know. I think that would be important. I don't see room for that on the current one, but I.
We can, we can modify it.
Like talk about something that we're doing for the town collectively, you know, fixing this or doing that, you know, a lead story and then, I don't know.
Yep.
That's just my two cents.
Yep. Okay, so we'll table that till more information.
All right.
Next up, under new business, transfer station mower. This past fiscal year, less tonnage has resulted in extra funding in the transfer station account. The highway superintendent would like to purchase a lawnmower for the transfer station using the extra funds. At present, the highway department has to transport the lawnmower back and forth from the highway garage. Currently, the, the mower they're looking at, and I'm not positive of the model, um, there's a twenty percent discount on the mowers until the middle of June, which would get the price to the mower they're looking at for the side hills over there to eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Eleven thousand?
Yep.
For, for, for a riding mower?
Yep.
Oh, I thought that was, oh, okay.
We're talking zero turn with the, yeah, we're not, it's not.
That'll do the side hill.
It's not your lawn tractor that you're mowing your grass at home.
We double check.
Five acres. This is, you, he's mowing the, the, the old hill.
The landfill.
The landfill.
We're talking a serious mower here and eleven thousand, yeah.
They're mowing it with a not so serious mower now.
Eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Double check that number from the email.
And where does he think he wants to pay for this?
He says in his email, they paid for less tonnage this year, so there's extra money in the transfer station account. That's all I can tell you.
You want my phone?
Want the paper back? See that? You son of a.
Just sit down, wait, I'll slide it to you.
Look at that. I love this table.
I know. If it were the old tables, it would have fallen down the crack between the two tables. Right?
Yes.
True.
Too bad I can't remember all these account numbers.
You want to come back to it or?
No, there's fifty thousand dollars in there as of, um, May twenty-one.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah. So all I will say about that is, um, that fifty thousand dollars, if no more expenses run against it till the first of July, would fall into free cash.
Yep. Yep. Folks' thoughts. I mean, the only advantage for doing this is they don't have to truck one back and forth.
They have one more piece of equipment to keep repairing.
We have a truck. We have a trailer. We do it now.
Yeah, that, listen, I, I had said before, uh, and I'll say it again. I think they have enough right now. Uh, we turned them down on their truck.
Yep.
We turned them down on their trailer. Yeah, I don't, no, so just put it on the trailer and drive it over there and somebody can mow.
Thoughts, Karen?
That's all I think.
Yeah.
Similar?
Very similar, yeah.
Okay, so we won't, we won't make a motion for that. It'll die on the vine.
All right.
Old business, there's none unless somebody can think of something from other business that.
Nothing on the agenda.
Nothing old business.
Other business unknown at the time of posting, there's nothing else.
I do want to say one thing about, let's go back to GS Precision, a name mentioned in there. I do want to publicly thank Jody Coleman for spearheading the clock and, and doing all of that. And the information he found and sent out, I don't know if you guys have seen that. It's registered in the Smithsonian, whatever it's called, Archives or something. The clock was made in 1901. Him and I had a long discussion when we were hanging flags this past weekend.
That's all the cool stuff in a newsletter article would be.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about. That's, that's the kind of stuff.
Feature, that is the feature article.
Did he also find the year it was repaired?
Uh, I, he didn't. He didn't, I don't, I don't know, we didn't discuss that. We just found out when the clock was made.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
He was telling me when the clock was made. There's, I don't think there was information on the bell, but the guy that is going to be doing the work is a wealth of knowledge, and I'm going to tell you right now.
I'd like to have him in here for.
I am, we are hitting him up for a Kiwanis meeting just to come and discuss that type of history, historical stuff. And that'll be one of those Kiwanis meetings that will last for three hours.
It will.
You going to invite me?
Sure, absolutely.
Let us know when you're going to do that, like, if you could have an open meeting or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Really cool stuff. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that he really spearheaded that.
Well deserved recognition, for sure.
So.
Town administrators report.
Okay, I don't have much. Peter kind of mentioned it, but they also put the flashing beacon systems were installed today at the crosswalk by Dunkin' Donuts, too. So finally, we have the same system that's, which is a lot of our residents asked about that, so they will be very excited.
I think the baseball team's coming.
Yeah, it's the baseball.
Here they come.
Here they come. The baseball team is coming to go out and cheer them on.
Aw, I feel like going out there, but we can't.
They'll be gone before.
Yeah, they'll be gone before we all get there.
So I just want you to know that the two crosswalk improvements, that were large complaints by our residents, done.
Nice, excellent. Thank you.
That thought came through.
I also wanted to just give you a heads up that I, Chris and I received a town usage request for Pratt Field from a Peter Johnson. It's a usage request from the Christian School in, in Greenfield to use Pratt Field for their soccer from August to October.
They're having fun.
He's going to come talk to you guys directly, and we can talk all about it. I just want to give you a heads up.
We'll have to coordinate that with Jen, too.
Oh, yeah, Jen and Brian Minor are already in the loop, and, but I think it's, we might want to think about fee charging and having a, you know, a deposit for this, talk about the equipment and all those other things. But this will be the first one of this liking, so.
I thought there, I thought there was, too.
I think there's already a policy on fee unless it's a local.
You're sure we can't go out there and cheer them on? They'll be gone by the time we get there.
Anyway.
You said that. They're still here.
I think some thought needs to go into this before this guy comes, is my point.
Okay.
Think through maybe what, if you want to do a security deposit, because you did rewrite the town usage policy. You want to think about what you want, you know, after he.
Especially if they're using like the town's goals.
He's going to use the nets, he's going to, right, and we just got to work out the details. He's going to have to put a porta potty out there, can't use the bathrooms, that kind of stuff. We just got to work through, and again, this is all, I already talked to John Bryan before I talked to you, of course, so. Just let's make sure we put some thought, I just want to put thought into this before he comes, so. And that's, and then we need two ZBA Select Board, ZBA fill-ins for June 12.
June 12.
Yes, Mark Fitzpatrick had talked to me last night about it and wondered if I could be there because he couldn't.
Right.
So.
So are you good?
I, I said, oh, no, Mark, I can't, of course I can.
Okay, and then they would like one more, though. They want two, because then it makes, Chris, you can explain this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, because a quorum is four, but then the applicants would need to have an approval of all four members. But if you have a fifth, then somebody can.
Can say no.
Can say no, and they'd still be an approval.
What time is this?
6:30, June 12.
And there's two different public hearings that night. The first one starts at 6:30, and the other one was scheduled for 7, but it'll, it'll depend on how long the first one takes.
So you got a commitment of Brian Hervey so far.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and Ken.
Okay.
Thank you.
I put it in my phone, I'll be here.
And that's all I have. That's all I have.
I have a question. The Select Board and Town Administrator have worked hard on the, getting the new personnel policy in place. Can you give the town some details as far as the employees in particular, details as far as timing?
Well, the plan, our tentative plan was to roll out the new updated personnel policy to go into effect one July 2025. The personnel policy is under review with Town Council as we speak, so it, I will do, continue to do some nudging to see if we can get it back in time. But having said all that, we're going to use our HR consultants to help us come up, you know, having some kind of meeting where all the town employees are together so we can discuss the changes or updates and talk about how we want to implement, you know, how the implementation may or may not affect them. Remember, we did talk about existing employees before the effective date are unaffected by the changes. It's going to be something that new employees, after, whenever we publish it, will be affected by the changes, right? And so, but we'll have a forum with all the town employees based off the conscious of the HR consultants on how to do that. So that's the, that's the plan, but it all backwards plans after we get a copy back from Donna, so.
So it may not be July 1?
It may not be July.
There's nothing magic about July 1. It could be August 1 or September 1.
But it was just a goal.
Yeah.
Of one of our.
Be nice to happen.
Like the fist, beginning of the fiscal year, just, you know, just kind of a good starting point, I think, for things.
Okay.
So I'll keep trying, but I don't see us turning around the meeting and getting all that other prep stuff done beforehand, you know.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You're going to have more than one employee meeting?
We'll do whatever it takes to reach out to employees.
Because maybe one department could not have everybody.
Yes, ma'am, that's a great point. Yeah, we would do, that, again, we have to socialize this with the HR. They're going to give us guidance on how to roll this out to our employees, so we stay out of trouble and we do it properly. That's where the HR consultants come in.
Yeah, we do want to touch every single employee so they can ask their questions.
And it's a face-to-face, or it's not an email, or a.
Zoom.
A text, or a Zoom.
This includes part-time, part-timers.
It's going to be regular part, all our categories of employees.
Yeah, so you might be more than two of you.
Yeah, that's right. It has to be, yep, everybody.
And they'll tell us the legal way to roll it out?
Yeah.
So it's all, nobody can say, well, he didn't tell me.
I, I remember one time, I don't know, my employer rolled out new, and, and there were a couple of meetings, but then everybody got their copy and everybody had to sign for it. And it was in a notebook, so that any change that came along, you had to insert the new pages and return the old pages to HR. So that they, they knew that every employee was keeping up to date.
Yeah, you stuff it with that.
The other thing is the three new personnel policies, too, that we, you know, the workplace violence, the town social media policy, and the updated sexual harassment policy. Those will be, that's all part of the package with the personnel policy.
And which ones the employees have to sign every year, like sexual harassment.
And we have to go around every year, you guys sign for this, even though, I know, yeah, we got, we're going to, it'll be, it might even be the who for Deb or Patricia, the HR consultants to, to be the, the.
Trainer, whatever you want.
The person in front of the town.
They would, they're going to be the most knowledgeable.
It can answer the questions.
But more to follow on that.
Great.
That's all, that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Okay.
Anything from County Clerk? No?
All right.
I'm Ed Weider.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
All right. We missed the.